Welcome all. I call this informal session to order with the briefing today, City Council briefing, on potential changes to the city's election system. And we're privileged to have Christopher Barington, our Deputy City Attorney here to talk to us. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Mark, did you want to say anything at the outset?
Go ahead.
Okay. You pull up the briefing. So today, we're here to brief you and also to brief the public on an item of great interest to both the public and the body, and that is potential changes to the city's election system. My intention today is to walk you through the history of the city's election system, going back to the founding of the city, talk about the current election system that's been in place since 1996, discuss the procedural history of the Holloway case, talk about General Assembly action that occurred in this last session of General Assembly in 2021, talk about the opinion and order from the federal court that came in on the Holloway case after the General Assembly made its legislative changes, talk through the options for City Council, and talk through a communication plan with the public as to the considerations that this body is deliberating upon. First, the history of our election system. The city of Virginia Beach, as we know it, was founded in 1963. Post-merger, the city's election system had seven boroughs. There were six magisterial districts from Princeess Anne County, each having one member elected by and from the district. And then the compromise politically at that time was that the former city of Virginia Beach was a single district but with five members elected by and from the district. That's how you initially ended up at 11 council members. In 1967, that system was challenged. It went all the way to the Supreme Court of the United States in the case of Dutch v. Davis. That case was an equal-protection case, challenging essentially having five representatives from one geographic jurisdiction and one from the other six. It resulted in a 7-4 system. That is the foundational framework for our current system. In that system, seven members of City Council reside in each of seven residence districts, but all seven are elected at-large, and that is very important for our discussion today. We will be using the term residence districts to reflect where the member of the City Council has to live in the district, but that person is voted on by everyone in the city. In addition to the seven residence district members, we have four at-large members, one of whom is the mayor. That became the case in 1988, when the city had a charter change allowing the public to vote at-large for the mayor. Previously, the mayor was selected among the 11 council members by a vote of the body itself at the organizational meeting every two years. Much scrutiny and consideration of our election system happened in the 1990s. There was a mayor's commission and panel at the time. It recommended seven districts of equal population with one council member elected by and from the voters of the district. And so that is a ward system, as we will be using the term today. Essentially, the seven members who were previously residence districts in 1990, the mayor's commission said those districts should become ward districts, where only the voters of each district could vote for those seven members. There was a referendum that was considered by council and put on the ballot in 1994. It passed, supporting both equal population of districts and the implementation of the ward system for those seven districts. The City Council accordingly, after that referendum was voted on favorably by the public to change to the ward system and to support equal populations, the City Council asked the General Assembly to change the city's charter to require equal population and to implement wards. In 1995, the General Assembly granted the equal-population requirement, but denied the opportunity to switch residence districts to ward districts and directed the city in 1996 to conduct a second referendum. That second referendum was held in 96. That referendum had a differently worded question, and it resulted in the opposite outcome, that the public at that time favored residence districts to ward districts. So that is basically what our system has been since 1996. The District Court, this same court but a different judge, in 1997, considered whether our system at that time violated Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act and determined it didn't, and dismissed that case. The only other material change to the system came in 2008, when elections for local offices, school board, and city council were moved from May to November to allow for a greater public participation in the voting process. So where are we now? Well, since 1996, we've had essentially the same system, and it's substantially the same all the way back to 1967. That system is governed by the city's charter, which is Section 3.01 particularly. Importantly, the city's charter is a document that is passed as a legislative item in the General Assembly. It is the General Assembly in Virginia, a Dillon's Rule state, that tells the city what it can do and how it can do it. And particularly, any change to the election system outside of the involvement of courts would have to come from the General Assembly. You do not control your own city charter, although you can certainly ask for charter changes, and the General Assembly could either do that or not do it. You have 11 members, as you well know. Four members, including the mayor, are elected at-large. The other seven of you are in residence districts from approximately equal population. As you also know, the decennial census happens every 10 years, and so you are required to redistrict under the state constitution once every 10 years at least, as a result of population changes recorded by the census. And importantly, for our consideration today, census data is usually available this time of year and the year following the census. Because of COVID-19, we understand that census data will not be available for local use until at least August 30th of 2021, and perhaps after the state spends some time working with that data and passing it along to the localities. The school board is elected using the same system as City Council. That's set forth in City Charter, Section 1604. The only difference to their system is their chair is not elected at-large from the public, is elected by their members, and so the chair does not have to be one of the four at-large members. It can be any of the 11 members of the body. So over time, there's been a historical criticism of the city's system, particularly with respect to the fact that all 11 seats are elected at-large by all of the voters of the city. What that means, in the eyes of those who are critical of the system, is that the majority opinion in the entire city gets its choice of all 11 council members. It does not allow minority voices, whether that being a racial or ethnic minority or political minority or otherwise, to elect members in the same proportionality that those other opinioned voters are present in the city. An example of that, just a very rough example, is if we only had 100 voters in the city, and again, assuming there was racial polarization, which is a matter that was disputed in the court case. But if there were, then with 70 white voters, 20 black voters, five Asian voters, and five Hispanic voters in this hypothetical 100 voters, if there was racial polarization, then the candidate supported by the white majority would always win all 11 seats. A visual example of that is this graphic, where you see voters of all different backgrounds and represented by different colors on the chart there, blue, purple, green, et cetera. If you had racially-dominated election choices, then all of your council members would be, in this example, purple. Similarly, or differently actually, the people who support moving to a ward system where there are districts where only the voters of that district can vote for their elected representative, means that you can draw smaller subcircles of the community, and some of those subcircles can better reflect minority voices in our community. And you could elect, as you can see from the graphic, people of all different backgrounds. There's been a longstanding response to that criticism, and that is that historically, it's not been possible, under the geography of the city and where people live, to draw what we call a majority-minority district for a single minority in Virginia Beach. In fact, perhaps by virtue of its beginnings as a military town, Virginia Beach is one of the most racially-integrated, said differently, least segregated larger cities in America. Our minority communities are dispersed throughout the city. There's not a single concentration in one part of the city of our minority residents. And it was not feasible, even through the 2010 redistricting, your last redistricting, to draw a district with a single majority constituting the majority of that district. The other piece relevant to the case and to the conversation is that Virginia Beach minority communities and the experience of the experts we've worked with in our presentation of the Holloway case, as well as a lot of individual citizens who came forward to testify at the trial, is that Virginia Beach minority communities are not politically cohesive. In other words, it is not accurate in the judgment of a number of people to say that a majority of black voters, Asian voters, and Hispanic voters all consistently prefer the same candidates in elections. But if they did, then combining those three minority groups into districts would be a way to draw a map that addressed a larger group of minorities who could perhaps be drawn into a single combined minority-majority district. And that's what the plaintiffs in the Holloway case have alleged, and it's what the court has, at this point, accepted, is that the plaintiffs show that black, Asian, and Hispanic voters in Virginia Beach predominantly do support the same candidates. And so a combined majority-minority map could address these concerns about being able to draw a majority-minority district. This is just a graphic that shows you what I just told you, which is Virginia Beach, in a scale of larger metropolitan areas, is one of the least segregated cities in the United States. That makes it really hard to draw a map where you're drawing circles around minority communities for purposes of drawing districts. There have been a number of recent developments that affect the city's election system that you, as a body, are probably aware of, but maybe members of the public are not. And the sequencing of these events matters for purposes of the context of our discussion today. Particularly, there were changes in Virginia state law that occurred after this case was tried in October of 2020, but before the court issued its ruling in March of 2021. And where we find ourselves, by virtue of the legislative changes, is that even without the court's ruling, the election system would still be changing by virtue of those state law changes. And so it's important to understand that the rationale between or in front of City Council and its decision to defend this case that was filed all the way back in 2017 through trial was on one set of facts, and then the General Assembly stepped in. And so now you find yourselves, after the General Assembly has done its thing with a court ruling, that has to be viewed in light of the legislative changes as well. Now, particularly, the two legislative changes that we're going to discuss today are House Bill 2198 and House Bill 1890 and Senate Bill 1395, which together are the Virginia Voting Rights Act. A little bit about the Holloway case, though, so we can go in chronology. The Holloway case was brought originally by Ms. Latasha Holloway in 2017. She originally filed by herself without attorneys. About a year later, Ms. Georgia Allen, a well-known civil rights leader in this area, became a second plaintiff, and they together are represented by Campaign Legal Center, which is a public-interest law firm based in DC but with offices in Chicago and other locations. The key allegation in the case has been that the city's at-large system violates Section 2 of the Federal Voting Rights Act by diluting minority voting strength and by preventing a combined group of black, Hispanic, and Asian voters from electing their combined candidates of choice. We call that a coalition claim, and that is important in that it is an unusual claim under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. Without getting into relitigating the case, the city disputes the facts alleged and legal assertions, and presented a thorough alternate view of whether voting in Virginia Beach follows the patterns plaintiffs allege it does. And there was a bench trial that was conducted in October of last year. After that bench trial was conducted, the Virginia General Assembly passed House Bill 2198, which says, notwithstanding other provisions of law, for example, the city's charter, in a locality that imposes district-based or ward-based residency requirements, which we do under our city charter, in that instance, the member elected from each district or ward shall be elected by the qualified voters of that district or ward and not by the locality at-large. So therefore, at this point, moving forward without further legislative changes at the state level, your historical residence district system has been changed to a ward system, at least for those seven seats. And this law is equally applicable to school boards. The other massive change in Richmond at the General Assembly this last year was the Virginia Voting Rights Act. There are a number of significant changes that occur to election processes in the state of Virginia, but particularly for our purposes today, that law in part says that an at-large method of election, including one that combines at-large elections with district or ward-based elections, shall not be imposed or applied in a manner that impairs the ability of members of a protected class to elect candidates of its choice or its ability to influence the outcome of an election. So just by virtue of the passage of that language, both sets of your at-large systems, in terms of your seven districts that have to become wards anyway, and your three at-large non-mayor seats are subject to a future challenge where that at-large method of election can be said to impair the ability of members of a protected class to either elect candidates of its choice or even its ability to influence the outcome of an election. So that is actually broader than the Federal Voting Rights Act case and federal voting rights act legislation, and takes away a number of the defenses that we have asserted in the federal court action. It also importantly establishes a preclearance process with the state attorney general or an alternate path, but essentially, there's an additional important step there that the federal preclearance process is gone, but there's a new state preclearance process that has happened. And again, this law is equally applicable to school boards. So even without the Holloway case having ever been filed, our current system is changing for 2022 and would be changing. Seven residence districts become wards without further action from the General Assembly. Citizens will no longer be electing all 11 of their council members, and if it's a 10-district ward system, for example, then you would be able to vote as a voter simply for your one ward member every four years and your mayor. There are three at-large districts under our current system, not residents-at-large, but at-large-at-large, and those are subject to a further challenge under the Voting Rights Act, even if the city were to prevail in the case on appeal, even if the case had never been brought. So after the General Assembly made its changes, which directly affected Virginia Beach's voting system, the District Court issued its opinion and order, March 31st of this year, roughly, you know, a month and a half ago. And in that order, the city's election system was found to violate Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act and be unlawful. Specifically, the holding was that the city's system denies Hispanics, African-Americans, and Asians equal access to the electoral and political process. The court prohibits further elections under this system, and the court, for a later date, will determine an appropriate remedy. And what that means is a new system, and to award an amount of attorney's fees and costs to plaintiffs that are also subject to a later determination after a reasonable business hearing. The case status, as we stand here today on May 11th, 2021, is that the District Court has thrown out the current election system. The plaintiffs are preparing their petition for fees and costs. They, at last discussion, were seeking $3.88 million in fees and costs, subject to adjustment by the court. The city and the plaintiffs are both prepared for or are preparing for future hearings on a remedy as to the system, and the city has filed a notice of appeal to preserve its appellate option. Now, the appellate issues in the case are, and I don't want to spend too much time on this, but there are a number of issues that we think are meritorious for consideration by an appellate court. First of all, there's a penultimate or an ultimate legal question in this case, which is, under Section 2, as a matter of law, can you combine multiple minority groups to assert a claim? The Supreme Court of the United States has not spoken on that. The Fourth Circuit, which is Virginia-based circuit, is set in dicta, perhaps that it is skeptical of that approach, but it has not ruled on whether coalition claims are viable. And then other circuits in the United States are split. So that is something that we think the Supreme Court of the United States would have some interest in if the council was inclined to pursue an appeal all the way through that point. There's a separate factual issue of whether the plaintiffs, in fact, proved through quantitative and qualitative data, quantitative data and qualitative testimony, whether these three minority groups are, in fact, politically cohesive in Virginia Beach. What that means is, do these three groups, in fact, consistently support the same candidates and causes? And then there are other legal issues, such as standing mootness and ripeness, that would be raised if the council elected to appeal. Other appellate considerations, though, include that there is a high level of uncertainty at any level of appeal. No outcome can be reliably predicted. They are expensive and time-consuming to reach the next or the final result, even if favorable. And certainly, that's particularly true in an elections case where your next City Council election is in November of 2022. The deadline currently stated for candidates to file would be the second Tuesday in June of 2022, and candidates would need some period of time before June 2022 to circulate ballots or circulate petitions to get signatures to be on the ballot. So functionally, you really need to know what your system is by early 2022. In the remedial phase, which we believe the Circuit Court, I'm sorry, the District Court would pursue at the same time that we were pursuing an appeal, is the possible remedies are essentially to change the residence district system as well as the three at-large seats that you have to a ward system of some type. We discussed definitions earlier, but essentially, a ward is where a candidate must reside within the geographic boundary of the district, and they are elected only by the voters of that district, unlike your current residence districts. Superward is just a larger geographic area within the city that can overlap with two or more wards. Each candidate in that instance would also have to reside within the boundary of the superward, and they would be elected solely by the residents of the superward. The reason these are remedial in a Section 2 case is because if you draw the districts, as opposed to having everybody voting from the city, minority populations can represent a greater proportion of one or more wards and therefore have a greater ability to elect their preferred candidates. The plaintiff's remedial plan, at least as it's set forth in its pleadings and at trial, is to create a 10-district ward system and have at least two of those districts be what they call, what we call, minority-opportunity districts. In other words, drawn in a way that particularly optimized the ability of minority candidates to elect, I'm sorry, minority voters to elect preferred candidates. Now, there is a settlement proposal that we are bringing to you. It is something that was recently put together between plaintiffs and defendant's counsel to see if there was an ability in the community to support an alternate approach to the one plaintiffs are litigating, and to see if the council can support it, and to see if the court can support it. That proposal is, instead of going to a 10-district ward system, rather go to a seven-district ward, three-superward system, where each representative of a ward and each representative of a superward would be voted on only by the residents of their district. Another way to visualize this is, if the city of Virginia Beach were a pie, then you would be slicing it seven different ways for your wards, and then you would be slicing that same pie three different ways for your superwards. The mayor would continue to be elected at-large under the settlement proposal. The approach to drawing the minority-opportunity districts would be to draw at least three of the 10 total districts to create minority-opportunity districts. The current discussion is that two of the seven districts would be minority-opportunity districts, and one of the three superwards would be. One of the conditions of the settlement is that the plaintiffs and you, the City Council, and we, as your attorneys, have to agree on actual final maps to recommend to the court. That is going to be a heavy lift between now and June 15th, but that is the effort that the parties have undertaken. And at a conceptual level, both our expert and the plaintiff's experts believe that it is possible to draw maps that would satisfy all parties and hopefully the court. As part of the settlement proposal, the $3.88 million in rising attorney's fees that plaintiffs claim would be reduced to a liquidated amount of $1.6 million. They would be payable within 11 days after court approval, if the court approves both the consent decree and the joint maps that the parties would recommend. Again, and I want to emphasize this, any settlement that the parties enter into is something that has absolutely got to be reviewed and approved by the District Court. That court has final authority over the consent decree, and we should expect that the court would be involved in Virginia Beach elections, at least until the next census in 2030. And the other piece of this, and we understand it's an important piece, is that the city retains the right to appeal if settlement process has not been successfully completed by July 15th. So we are at a period of about 65 days here where there's a ceasefire, so to speak, a window to try to see if we can all reach a settlement that can work for everybody and the court. So just to give you some idea of concepts, and these are not actual maps, these are not anything we're going to bring to you as a final map, but to give you an idea of just what splitting the city seven ways would be, we have an exemplar document. I want to say, again, this is simply identifying a concept and is not a map that we expect to bring to you as a proposed final map. Similarly, the three, the idea of three superwards shows, instead of dividing the Similarly, the three, the idea of three super wards shows, instead of dividing the city by seven ways, you're simply just dividing the city three ways. We give these to you reluctantly in the sense that these are not in any way, shape, or form final maps. It's just giving you the idea of what a system conceptually could be. There is a process for agreeing to joint maps. We came to you a week ago, last Tuesday. The concept at that time was that census data is the most reliable, accurate data that we're going to have, and we know that maps are going to have to be adjusted using that data anyway. So the thought was to wait till we had census data and to draw final maps. The challenge, though, is that the case is not resolved until we have final maps approved by the court, and that census delay that I told you about earlier puts you into the fall before you have finality on your settlement and your system. So the workaround that was refined after last Tuesday was to draw final maps using the American Community Survey, which is a product of the U.S. Census Bureau, but it is essentially a statistical sampling that they take each year that shows you trends in between the 10 years that you do an actual headcount of the citizens. The plaintiffs have told us they agree to be bound by a 731 system using maps drawn using ACS data. I can tell you that ACS data is, while certainly not the same as the census, it is data that's relied upon by the federal government for, I think, 30% of its discretionary spending, hundreds of billions of dollars. And also, our finance department uses it for a number of different purposes internally for budgeting and spending. We like that the plaintiffs will be bound by a 731 map by July 15th because it helps solve the appellate timeline issue if this whole thing falls through. The plaintiffs have asserted, and our expert has agreed with us, that you can draw final maps off of the ACS latest series of data and only have to do technical population and precinct boundary adjustments once you have census data. There is also the concept of how do our appellate rights fit into this settlement concept? What we would agree to do is that the city would stay its appeal through July 15th as the parties and the court try to work through a settlement. The stay of the appeal would be lifted on at least three events. One is if this body votes not to approve the settlement in a public vote on June 15th, 2021, 35 days from today. Two, the parties on either side could not agree on joint proposed maps for the 731 plan, and that's an iterative back-and-forth process that hasn't happened yet. And the third piece would be if the court did not approve the 731 maps and consent decree plan before July 15, 2021. Now, to be clear, the court operates under its own timeframe, and, you know, the court has absolutely no obligation to act or not act on or before any date. This simply says when we would have the ability in our agreement with the plaintiffs to return to the appellate path if we're not in the end zone by July 15th. As part of that, the plaintiffs have agreed that if the reason that we are not in the end zone yet happens to be the court hasn't acted on the settlement yet, then they would agree to join a motion to expedite the appeal at that time, so you won't have lost any time in pursuing your appeal while you're in this now 65-day window to see if we can get a resolution. And again, I say this, and it needs to be understood, any settlement must be reviewed and approved by the district court before you have any kind of finality on a settlement. So when we look at options for the city council, settlement being the first option, there are essentially two other options. One would be to reject the settlement and go straight to appeal. One would be to reject the settlement and not appeal and simply just accept whatever the trial court remedy ends up being, both on the fee side and on the plan or the system side. I can tell you that our expectation is that the court, on its own, would implement a 10-1 ward system. That would be the 10 representatives, all from districts, drawn in a way that would allow for the creation of at least two majority-minority districts or minority-opportunity districts, and presumably, the mayor would still be in at-large election under that system. Practically, we think you're down to two choices. One is to reject the settlement and appeal. The other is to simply approve the settlement. If you reject the settlement and appeal, and this is where we get into the timeline and the context, the council defended this case all the way through trial with the belief and understanding that it would be possible, if we prevailed, whether at trial or on appeal, to return to the current system. The General Assembly has taken that off the table. It is still, and people will perhaps support this, a reason to appeal is to defend the principle that the city's current election system doesn't violate the Voting Rights Act, Section 2. And gosh darn it, we want an appellate court to speak on that. And certainly, if you prevail in the appeal, then you would not have the ongoing federal court involvement in your system for the next decade, but you would still understand, you know, also, the legislative changes in Richmond likely have attorney general involvement at the state level. The cons to rejecting the settlement and appealing is that you don't have control or involvement in, you don't have control over your destiny anyway, because it all has to be approved by a court, but you have involvement in the outcome of the system rather than having a 10-1 implemented while you're seeking the appeal or if you don't appeal at all. You can seek a stay of the remedial phase. I can tell you, I don't think it would be granted, but that is an option. Appeals are costly and time-consuming, and you do have these council elections coming up in a little over a year, and you have an uncertain outcome. Your best case under Virginia law now is a seven-ward, four-at-large system with the potential for future litigation over those non-mayor-at-large seats and subject to state attorney general preclearance. Your worst case is that the 10-1 system is imposed on you at the trial court level. It's not reversed on appeal, and you've got two meters running at that point. In addition to your 3.88 million, you have the cost that we're incurring to appeal it as well as the plaintiff's cost recovery action or fee recovery action at the appellate level. The option of approving the settlement means you do have some involvement in your electoral future. You would have a 731 system that would at least allow each citizen to vote for three council members over four years instead of two. It would resolve the Voting Rights Act, Section Concerns, and I think it would go a long way to addressing all of the state law concerns that we told you about, including the future challenge to the three at-large districts. You would address that by not having any more at-large districts. You would have them as super wards, and you would, of course, save at least 2.3 million in the difference between what the plaintiff's fee petition is now and what they've agreed to reduce their demand for. And then against settling is that there would not be an appellate court determination of whether the district court was correct in its ruling. You would have ongoing federal court involvement in the election system, and you are still, in that scenario, also subject to state law, which includes the new state preclearance system. School board elections is a wrinkle here. The school board is not a party in the Holloway case. The ruling only referred to city council elections, but at the same time, your city charter says that school board members are elected in the same manner and according to the same schedule as council members. One thing we do know after today, and we had a brief conversation with the court, that the court will not be addressing the school board directly in its ruling. And so anything that comes out of this consent decree, or if the court simply orders a remedy, is inferential, meaning you will probably have to go back to the General Assembly for a charter change to address the school board. But it's possible that if the federal court addresses the city council system, that, you know, it could be determined that the school board would follow the city council system without the federal court speaking to it directly. But there's also ambiguity as to the 11th member of the school board, whereas here we have an at-large chair or mayor. The school board does not have an at-large chair. They have a fourth at-large member. And so that is a distinction already in the two systems between the city and the school board, and that would have to be addressed. Public information. We hear you loud and clear that while you've been kept aware of this case, the public has largely not heard about all of these changes. And so the goal is to use a variety of city channels to disseminate the information and provide residents with an opportunity to provide feedback to you. There will be in-person briefings. Today is one of them. We anticipate another one on June 1st. And then there would certainly be public hearings, at least on June 8th and June 15th, which would be the date of the vote. We are open to and understand counsel will want to have additional town halls or community meetings, and so we would want to work through that with the council as a body or individual council members. And then there's a whole digital media virtual reach out that would contact folks who are connected to us that way. Julie Hill is the city's communications director. She's here if you have any particular questions about the public information process, but we've understood that counsel wants a robust education process between now and June 15th, and we feel poised to deliver. With that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Mr. Stiles, I want to apologize for not acknowledging you right off the bat, but if I can answer, ask one question just from a point of clarity. I think this is important. This has been ongoing for a couple of years, but could you explain the cloak of confidentiality that we have been under?
We have, in the past, engaged in settlement discussions pursuant to a judicial settlement conference and subject to the rules of the federal court that requires, while you're in settlement negotiations, that those negotiations remain confidential. We have tried very hard to explain to the other party, and I think the other party understands, that whenever a settlement proposal comes out of that process, you are a public body, and you are responsible to and responsive to the public, and therefore, the public has to be made aware. But prior to this time, there was not a settlement framework that the council was prepared to move forward with, and so therefore, under the court's orders and the federal rules, we were required to maintain confidentiality.
Oh, thank you, Mark. Any questions? Mr. Tower? Okay, and then Ms. Abbott, and then Mr. Moss.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say, I know it's possible, indeed likely, that members of council and certainly members of the public have different opinions, both political and legal, about this case and what the goals of the city were. And I just want to take an opportunity to state my appreciation for the handling of this case by the city attorney's office. I think it has been a difficult, complicated case in every sense of the word, and I think the lawyers, particularly Mr. Boynton, but all the city attorney's staff and outside counsel as well, have represented the city in the highest and best possible way. I'm very proud of the work they did, and I thank them for it. I think Chris's summary was excellent. I could not imagine doing a better job of a very difficult case, and thank you, Chris, and thanks to all of you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tower.
And thank you, Mr. Tower. Ms. Abbott?
Thank you. My question is for Julie, so I don't know if you want to come up. And I also share Councilman Tower's appreciation for your work on this. I know it's not been easy. I noticed on the last slide, there was the option of sending mail to the public. I assume that would be similar to the postcards that we sent out through the COVID pandemic to notify people about potential grant applications and all of that. Is that what you're thinking for that section, too?
Depending on how much information we actually decide to send, whether it's a postcard that gives them a high level and then sends them to a website, or it's a pamphlet, brochure, something that gives them a little bit more substance, we're going to see some variation in the cost and the idea. But that is the intent, is that it would be a direct mail piece. I think we can back off, though, from doing the full mailing that we did during COVID because that we did with residents and businesses. So perhaps we can just exclude the businesses and just send to all the residences, and that would help us a little bit on the cost. But we are looking at a $50,000 price tag for that, if that's something that you would like to pursue.
I imagine it would be expensive. Well, I would hope that it would be something that redirects to some kind of a page like, you know, the COVID ones did, just because I think it's too much information to put on a little postcard. But I do think it's important that everybody have every opportunity to review this if they would like to. And my other question, and I think I've asked this before, but I can't remember what you've told me, but is there a way, when, I know when I get my water bill, for example, I get an email, can we, for people who have opted in to get their water bill via email, to have some kind of link in the water bill that says, hey, by the way, there's a big thing happening, obviously, if you have a water bill. I know that that doesn't cover everybody, but it does give us another entry point and to get people's attention. And, you know, I mean, me being a millennial, I don't really look at my mail, so I depend heavily on those emails. So I think that, I know that I'm not alone in that when I get my water bill, I really look at that. So I didn't know if there was a way for us to put some kind of alert and say, hey, go click this link. Those people are obviously already internet accessible.
That's certainly something that we can explore. It depends on the cycle of the billing, but that's...
Yeah. Well, yeah, I realize it wouldn't be perfect, but presumably, we have permission to send those people email.
I think it's one more way to do it, and what we were showing you was really a laundry list to try to do as many things as possible to get the word out.
Yeah, well, in terms of what the body wants to do, I support aggressively trying to reach people in as many ways as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moss?
I'm probably the only one who's read this opinion seven times, and I brought it with me today, all 135 pages, and I've annotated it and studied it in great depth. And I hope that we have this full opinion also posted on the website so that people can read it and that hard copies would be in the library, because I don't think that anyone in the public can provide a really informed opinion and acknowledgement without reading it, because what it says about us as a city, about individuals here, and I think people ought to be knowing what we're consenting to into the findings, the statements about ourselves, which I take, in many cases, exceptions to, and maybe the larger public does also. But I would like to share, before getting to the opinion, a couple of things I asked the city attorney about in preparation for today, because I think homework is what we owe the public, is to do our due diligence. So I asked him, this is based on all the conversations that we have over time that now are in the public domain. Your narrative is that, independent of this suit, meaning the Holloway case, that the State Voting Rights Act, independent of the Fowler Act, drives us toward voting. And your response was, quote, "An at-large system or an at-large component of an election system is prohibited under the state version of the Voting Rights Act. If there is evidence that there is racially polarized voting, and in the locality and in that large system dilutes the voting strength of a protected class, see Virginia Code, Section 24.2-130, this is similar to, but broader than the test under the federal version of the Voting Rights Act, and thus, even were the city to prevail on appeal in the federal case, it would be less likely that the city could successfully defend an at-large system under the Voting Rights Act of the state of Virginia," unquote. I went further on to add, your narrative suggests that even at the Fowler Act, which enabled us to preserve the true all-at-large seats with seven wards, would be subject to challenge under the enacted Voting Rights Act. Answer, although House Bill 2198 leaves open the possibility of eliminating resident districts and going to an all-at-large system, as you are aware, such a change would require a charter amendment by the General Assembly and the compliance with the preclearance process established in the new Voting Rights Act. process established in the new Voting Rights Act. Even if those steps were to occur, for the reasons stated in the response to your prior question, such a change would be subject to future claim that it violated Section 24.2-130 of the Voting Rights Act law. I went on to state, you provided a narrative that has stated that while the text of the state's Voting Rights Act is not on its face unconstitutionally suspect with regard to the equal protection clause of the U.S. Constitution, a specific application of the interpretation and the application of the stating votes right act provision with regard to the further undefined influence district could turn around and be a foul of the equal protection clause, thus being constitutionally vulnerable. Your reply was, quote, "There could be potentially both facial and applied challenges to portions of the new State Voting Rights Act, including claims under the equal protection clause." Then I asked, you provided a narrative that the U.S. Supreme Court has yet to establish that combination of minorities can be formed under what evidentiary standard to prove a violation of Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 as amended? And your answer was, quote, "The Supreme Court has not yet ruled on whether coalition claims are recognizable under Section 2," unquote. I went on to ask, you provided a narrative that the U.S. federal courts have come to different conclusions as to whether other than a singular minority can be used to meet the 50% plus one standard, independent of addressing the evidentiary standards for violating voting behavior patterns. Your answer was, "There is a split among the federal circuits on this issue," unquote. You have advanced that if we were to appeal at the Fourth District Appellate Court and win, assuming the appellate's appealed to the U.S. Supreme Court, and one would still be subject to litigation under the stating, excuse me, under the state's Voting Rights Act. Answer, if we were to prevail on appeal in either the Fourth Circuit or the Supreme Court, the plaintiffs or others similarly situated could file a new suit under the Voting Rights Act and could face an easier path to judgment because of the more relaxed standard for liability under the state. A plaintiff need not prove what is referred to as the first jingles precondition that minority group at issue is sufficiently large and geographically compact to constitute a majority in a single-membered district. This likely means the plaintiffs in a state action will need not to rely on a coalition of minorities to satisfy the state's Voting Rights Act requirements," unquote. I wanted to say, it is not, this is my question to you, is it not a factual finding that if the Supreme Court were to rule in favor by finding that for the purpose of finding a violation of Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act of 1965 as amended, that the combination of minorities cannot be used to achieve minority status within the terms of the federal law that the application of the State Voting Rights Act would be constrained? You answered, "The state statute would not be directly constrained. A Virginia court may find a federal court's interpretation of the Federal Voting Rights Act informative, but it would not be bound by those findings in interpreting state law. Further, there are differences between the current federal action and the contemplated state action, because a state plaintiff would not need a coalition of different minority groups. A federal ruling on coalition claims would be of limited relevance," unquote. I went on to ask, your narrative has shared the probability of winning on appeal at the Fourth District Appellate Court is highly dependent upon the luck of the draw of the judges in rotation that would hear our case, and whether it was three judges or nine. And your reply was, "Our case would be heard by a three-judge panel, and the composition of that panel will affect the prospects of our success," unquote. Your narrative has been getting a stay on Judge Jackson's, on implementation of his remedy based on his ruling, is nil, that's what we've heard. And your answer was, "I've been advised by our outside counsel that the likelihood of a stay is very low, and thus is consistent with my view." And then your narrative has been securing a stay from the Fourth Circuit was low, and the Supreme Court even lower. And your answer was, again, outside counsel advises us that the Fourth Circuit is unlikely to find that we satisfy the standard detailed in response to your next question. Most likely, we would find it hard to satisfy Element 2, because the Fourth Circuit will likely find that the appeal could conclude before any remedy was applied, due to the November 22 election in parentheses. And thus, that the city will not suffer irreparable harm in the absence of a stay. The Fourth Circuit may find we are weak on other points as well. The standard for a Supreme Court stay is even higher than for a circuit stay." And the last question I had that I asked was, you have not yet shared, and I now request you share, at what point of the public briefing, what is the standard our case would have to make to meet a stay? The defendant has a strong or substantial likelihood of success on the merits. The defendant will suffer irreparable harm if the district court proceedings are not stayed. The staying district court proceedings will substantially injure other parties. And lastly, where the public interest lies. For a Supreme Court to stay, we would have to show beyond these factors that the Supreme Court granted us writ of certiorari, which does in a small number of cases, and to rule in our favor. I thought these were important things to share, so that the larger public could understand how we got to this briefing, because I realize the summary. And now I'd like to turn to the opinion itself. I would like to start off on page 20. I realize you all don't have copies of this, but I thought it was important, because I appreciate Judge Jackson's work here. But at least he recognized that back in the day, that I did ask this body to support the NAACP and the Coalition of Minorities to adopt the map and the ward system that they presented to city council back, I think it was 2011, and this council rejected that. And the court actually mentioned that twice in his 135-page testimony. But the quote that he has, and I want to explain the quote attributed to me, "A district ward system for local elections, because the current system is flawed, and the at-large voting system dilutes the voting strength of voters." Well, in the context that I mentioned it, it wasn't in the context of disadvantaging a minority. It was the same group of powerful interests who donate to all campaigns that are successful more often than not, or the same group that contribute to minority campaigns or to non-minority campaigns. And the only way to break the influence of money on the elections is to have more districts on a ward system to dilute the effect that money has when you have to run citywide. My support for ward systems has always been about increasing political competition in all districts, because I think the real people disadvantaged by our current system is all beach voters, because money has much too much impact. And if you look at the correlation between winning candidates and their contributors, that'd probably be more revealing than the statistical analysis that was performed by either party in court. But I did want to talk about that. Now, someone said, how did we get here? The crux, the keystone of this argument to get standing is the cohesive minority, a cohesive minority, a coalition of minorities, which were Hispanic, African-Americans, and Asian-Americans. That was the three bodies population they made. So that's the crucible of the case. And why that's important, I want to go back, because I did listen to all this case on the phone, because that was allowed. And I endured that with great satisfaction, as people could imagine. But one of the things that was interesting, on page 14, this is the start of why we, I believe, did not have a compelling case and rebut to what is the crux of this case, which is the coalition of minority argument. The court went on to recognize all the experts from the plaintiffs, and he went on to say in very specific terms, how the court recognizes this individual as a qualified expert. But on page 14, he didn't have anything to say about our expert. He just acknowledged it, but didn't mention that they were a qualified expert for the purposes of statistical analysis. And so if you go on to page 110, in this opinion, bear with me why this is a big document, "Overall," quote, "Overall, the court finds Dr. Kidd's claims unpersuasive because of his lack of statistical analysis to support his arguments." Next thing he said, quote, "Dr. Kidd has not conducted his own statistical analysis, and when he has, it has severe limitations," unquote. That was a major theme throughout the basis of saying that they met the test, is we had no expert competing, why the court recognized analysis to compete the claims being made." And he goes on to say at the end, on the bottom of page 110, "Dr. Kidd's analysis is not credible and is methodologically flawed, which prevents the court from drawing reasonable conclusions about minority voter turnout, which gets to the heart of the cohesion analysis." So people shouldn't yet conclude where I'm coming from. I'm just trying to get how we got here, and I think the public needs to. It's more than just these options. It's the court itself and what the judge had to say, and every member should really read this. So if you go on to page 46 of his opinion, and this is an important part about if we were to appeal, where would I appeal, lie? Because I think if we're not educated to that, we don't know what we really want to do, or what the public wants to tell us they want to do, because they haven't been properly educated about what the choices are. So how do we get to this definition, which the Second, Fifth, Ninth, and Eleventh Circuits have appellate things, have ruled that you can have a coalition minorities? They've put that in their cases. But the Fourth Circuit has not. So in fact, but it hasn't ruled at all. And this is what was said by the Fourth Circuit in the case, this was on page 46. The Fourth Circuit stated, quote, "Any construction of Section 2 that authorizes voter dilution claims of multiracial coalitions would transform the Voting Rights Act from a law that removes disadvantages based on race into one that creates advantages for political coalitions that are not so defined." And in an earlier footnote, it noted that the Supreme Court has never opined on the issue and has been silent on the issue of minority coalitions. So that would have to be the basis, because we now can't introduce new evidence as we appeal. We are stuck with the analysis that we had. But the public needs to know that in fact, that there isn't a precedent, and he acknowledged that there wasn't a precedent, and he'd be relying on other aspects. So I think that's important to pick and make sure that people know that we are consenting and allowing a precedent to be set. Now, when it gets to the metrics of political cohesion, this is also important for the public and all of us to understand what we're accepting. And I might be accepting it myself, but we ought to be knowing what we are accepting. I think that's important. They had no empirical, direct, explicit analysis to show political cohesion, and I'll talk about that right from the records. These won't be my words, these will be the judge's words. The court finds that there's substantial qualitative evidence showing that Hispanics, blacks, and Asians are politically cohesive, and with respect to the shared political advocacy. The public's going to have to read that and draw their own conclusions. I can't cover all the anecdotal examples that he showed, which there's obviously different opinions on. And then he goes on to say that when they did the empirical analysis by their court-acknowledged and validated experts, that there was insufficient empirical data to draw any conclusions about Hispanics and Asian-Americans' voting patterns. So he took the empirical work of the African-American voting and did inferences about how it would apply and what it means, and predicts about how Hispanics and Asians would vote. And had an analysis, and the court accepted that, and obviously, that's a whole nother discussion, but clearly, there is, people need to be aware of that. And again, on page 68, he talked about my flawed voting quote, which I was proud to support. And then he goes on to talk about the races. And this was the point I made earlier, and I know it wasn't part of the record, but I just, is I think there's much more to be learned between the correlation of financial disclosure statements and contributions to winning candidates than there is about their ethnicity, or their race, or their religion, or their gender. But that certainly wasn't something that the court was interested in. But it clearly infers and states explicitly that whites vote as a block for whites, and whites of blocks vote against minorities. I just, I don't find that to be, I don't conclude that, but that's what he concludes, and that's what he states. And I think people, I take great exception to that. I think there's much more to it, but they didn't do any content analysis of newspapers or campaigns or any of that kind of stuff, but just drew that statement about us based on statistics without context. And I don't find that to be overly helpful. But I understand that's where we're at. Also, the court never acknowledged about the partisan endorsements of political parties and their impact on races. I thought that was interesting. And there was no discussion of when there was a slating with a minority candidate back in 1986. I tend to remember that election. I know Mr. Jones doesn't, and Mrs. Henley does. There were a whole slate of candidates, five of us, and I can name them. Sam Meekins, it was Walvardo, Nancy Parker, John Perry, and myself, all ran, five candidates, raised $30,000. Ooh, that was a huge sum, not really, in 1986. Three of us got elected. Seventy-year-old African-American candidate, retired history teacher from Kentville High School. That was a slating. There was no mention on that. And then it goes on to say, though, he wasn't elected, reelected in 1990, without saying all but Nancy Parker were unelected in 1990, not do their gender or their race or anything else, but because of the impact of the, what, Greek fest riots in May of the year prior, and that our response as the council was more responsible than the emotional visceral response that the public wanted. And ultimately, as the ship, captain who runs the ship aground, we paid the price, but that was the price I was willing to pay. That context was absent. So anyone who reads this would think, oh, people voted on reelection because he was black. Far from the truth. But that's the context you would take away over the context of this opinion. And I just think the public, that's why I think the public needs to read this. Doesn't mean we don't get to the same conclusion, but I would love that this could be a consent decree where you neither had to admit to all the charges that are in here about us as a community, that wasn't around as a city when Jim Crow was done, that wasn't around on post-Reconstruction, that's a city that's been here since 1966, but yet all those behavior patterns were poisted upon the citizens of Virginia Beach. And I just take exception to that. So I want to close out here, because I know I'm not going to have one last little thing to talk about, then I'm going to be done, Mr. Mayor, but I appreciate the time you've allotted, because I spent a lot of time on this, is that would we be better off if our goal is truly, which has always been my goal, to maximize political competition, which means in every district are more competitive, they're smaller, they're more compact, and they're not even though, be four minority-influenced districts, I don't know how many there might be. But if our goal is to improve competition, which should be part of this, not just for minorities, but for all Virginia Beach residents, 10 districts gets us closer to that goal. I'm surprised the court didn't say, how about 13 districts, and, you know, get more to get more competition. But I do believe, Mr. Mayor, and this is to the city manager, and hopefully that you've read this, or if you haven't, you would, there are a lot of statistics and data in here that should be troubling to all of us, and they require a thorough vetting. And that's what I'm expecting, and you'll be hearing from me about it. It's things they say about our schools, things they said about our police department, things they say about other statistics about our service delivery. If these are all true as to their application, then we have a lot of serious discussions to have, Mr. Mayor. We really do. Because I think they're out of context, but I'm willing to accept that they might be in context. And if they are in context, then they're not findings that we should be proud of, and we should know the path ahead. So I am, like I said, I've been through this document many times, Mr. Mayor, and I hope that we would provide these hard copies, at least for people to review at our libraries, posted, and this, because I think this is what people need to read before watching that. Because that, why it's accurate, doesn't provide the context of how we got here and why our choices are so limited, because of past opportunities that we failed to act upon, and also in part, because of the defense that we made. And I think, but needless to say, I believe, just as I did before in 2011, I believe in competition. I could just as easily accept 10 districts, but my concern is, we are accepting judicial supervision of our elections for over, for a decade at least, and we're surrendering the sovereign people's right to govern and decide their own manner by which we are elected, and it's by our past actions that we find ourselves here. So the citizens should hold us accountable for how we got here. And I'll wait to hear what the public has to say before issuing my final thoughts on where I'm going to stand on this issue. But I do encourage the public, please, it's 135 pages, it's double spaced, big double spaced, but it is worth your read for what the choice we're going to make, because it will forever change the face of politics in Virginia Beach and how we make decisions. And I appreciate the time you've afforded me, Mr. Mayor and my colleagues. And I appreciate the time you've afforded me, Mr. Mayor, and my colleagues.
My comments are much more simplistic than Mr. Moss's. Mine are just my own personal opinion. Certainly not trying to represent the council in any fashion. But in thinking back over the last year and how we got to this particular place, and I think it's very troubling to me. I am extremely distressed by the situation that the city council is put in. We're talking about a very basic tenet of our government, the voting system that will govern our city for the unforeseeable future. I fervently believe that any change to the system should be decided by the citizens, the voters of this city of over 450,000 people. The last time the citizens spoke on this issue was in 1996, when the question was put to the voters in a referendum. Did they want to have a ward system with each ward electing its own representative? Or did they want to continue the system which we have now with direct-- with district representatives elected at large? The vote was overwhelmingly to keep the current system. Last year, when it became apparent that the question would probably need to be considered again, we were in an extremely stressful situation. I think it's critical that we recount just what that situation was. First, we were at the height of a deadly pandemic with the primary concern for us and our citizens being just how to stay alive. We had no vaccine in sight, and we're living day-to-day trying to observe restrictions designed to control the virus the best we could. We could not gather people to discuss issues and could not begin to do good public information about other issues, such as our intended bond referendum on flooding projects or a question about changing our government system. Secondly, we were involved in an upcoming court suit regarding the voting system and were presented with some proposed settlement options. It seemed that it was not right for the city council, in closed session, to make any such decision with their public involvement, and the issue was just too complicated to present without much debate and participation. Confidentiality in the legal question prevented our being able to discuss the proposals publicly. And third, given the political reality of the presidential election consuming the attention of the voters, a local government question appeared to have little chance for adequate attention, particularly given the early voting opportunity, which would also reduce time for public discussion. It just seemed that the proper thing to do was to delay the local referendum questions to this fall, the 2021 voting opportunity. This would provide a much better timeframe for public discussion and then ample time to prepare for the next affected election of 2022. Well, I envisioned that we would have a similar, robust public discussion about how the city should go forward, much like we had had for the 1996 referendum question. At that time, there were vigorous discussions and debates, actually led by citizen groups on both sides of the question. This allowed for individuals to consider all of the possible ramifications of each system so that each voter could decide what they thought would be best for the city. Unfortunately, that opportunity is not to be allowed at this time. At no time did I ever hear that any representative of the General Assembly had any intent to become involved in this issue. It came as a complete shock to me when I heard in January that a bill had been introduced in the General Assembly to change our voting system without any public or local input. Of course, the court case had been heard in October, and we were still waiting to hear the ruling. I understood that it was customary that if there were court issues pending, the General Assembly would not take action. But that, too, was not to be. It's very important for the public to understand that the city council is not proposing this change. We are put in this situation very much because of the actions of the legislative, the executive, and the judicial branches which supersede our local authority. Those elements of our government that we have always looked to to provide the checks and balances which give our government the protections that we thought we had. I believe that we acted in good faith to try to address the question in the fashion that our local charter requires us to act. But we find out now that the local government has very little authority. I hope that this issue gets extreme analysis and study so it doesn't happen to any other local government. I can only say from my personal situation that I want to hear from as many sources as possible. I feel very inadequate to have to cast this vote. This is not-- Just not the way it's supposed to happen.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, Chris, I want to thank you. I want to thank Mark and the whole team, you know, for everything you did. You know, this is a very complicated situation. To a large degree, many things were out of our control. Wish we could have done things a little better. But, you know, between COVID and a whole bunch of other complicating factors out there, you know, we are now in a-- painted into a corner. But once again, I think, you know, the public engagement is going to be critical going forward to educate the voter on, you know, what's going on and why. Chris and Mark, I really appreciate the history of what's going on. You know, if you look at the three cities that are next to us, we all got different voting systems. And-- But, you know, the one thing that we can take from it on, we have a very eclectic city council in terms of race, age, political different-- you know, different political ideologies and everything. But once again, as, you know, Mr. Duhany said and a lot of other people, you know, I really think we're a respected body that respects each other. And, you know, we're going to move forward and ultimately do the best we can, the right thing as best as we can. Okay, thank you all very much. Any other comments, Mr. Stiles?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, does the council wish to give any additional direction to us with respect to specific elements of public outreach?
Okay. Yes, Ms. Raffs?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think-- And Mark, in trying to make sure we have public outreach, and we're trying to update and educate the public on just how important, you know, our election system is in Virginia Beach. I think it's important that we don't put forth a narrative that evades our responsibility and accountability to the people. I think-- You know, I think one of the key things in looking at-- Looking at the briefing, one of the most important things that was missing, and I think-- I don't want to speak for Councilman John-- Councilman Moss. But I think our past actions also led to why we are here. You know, we will always battle against time. I think time is our biggest foe, unable to get things done and do so in a manner that's responsible and expedient for our public. You know, but it's hard to look at yourself in the mirror and point out your flaws. It's even more harder to accept those flaws and then determine you're going to be able to fix them and do something about it. And so with this, I understand that here we are. We have state legislation, we have federal legislation that pretty much say there's no going back to the old system. But I just want to make sure in speaking to the public today that, you know, past actions from council, it's not-- I'm not on the side of evading the responsibility and accountability to council. I was always taught if-- To if you didn't get something done, it's fine, you don't make excuses. You didn't get it done, just say you just didn't get it done. And so by that, what I'm speaking to is the failed voter referendum of August. And I don't want to relitigate the matter, and I don't want to take up too much time, Mr. Mayor. But I really feel as though to the people really need to understand just how important that was because I hear it from people who support the current system, and I hear it from individuals and from people who don't support the current system. And what they all share in common is their frustrations, their frustrations and stress for not being able to voice their opinion. And I just-- I personally, I don't want to speak for anyone that's here. I just don't buy into-- And I just don't use an excuse as time has got in the way. I've seen us do things. I've seen us assign and allocate millions of dollars within a couple of weeks, turn around, have a meeting, a public hearing, and then I've seen that. So if we can do that, then we can definitely put forth an important question as important as as we elect our city officials on one of the most important elections I think our country has ever had that had the most turnout ever in elections. And so, again, I think-- I just want to make sure when we are educating the public, and there are a lot of frustrated and upset people who feel as though the state or the federal court somehow just came and implemented a system on us. I think we have to be honest about our actions or failed actions that also led to where we are today. And so, lastly but not least, I share certain sentiments that we have to do better in working with our state legislators as well. I understand that there was not communication that we feel as though we should have. But also understanding that I was raised to believe that two wrongs don't make a right. And that as a councilman at large, one of the-- One of the council members at large who's potentially may not have a-- You know, we're not going to have that large system, so my future is definitely going to change one way or the other. But I just want to make sure that people understand that when all is said and done, that we are still accountable to the people. And I just won't pass the buck down the road to say-- Or place fault at someone else's door. So I just want to make sure Mark and council understands when we are-- Whatever type of public outreach we do, that council also shares in the responsibility of how we got here. And I also wanted to thank you all for your work you've done on this case. In two years, it's a long time to be in litigation. And so I truly thank you for your attention and dedication as well to the case. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions, one from Mr. Boynton. And before I ask that question, John, I did read the whole transcript. The impression I get-- Let me put it that way-- Is that if we-- If we make a deal and with the plaintiffs in this case, and we go for the seven districts and the three super wards and the mayor, the 731, I got the impression from your comments-- and maybe I misunderstood-- but I got the impression from your comments that we don't really have any guarantee that that the state's not going to come in and change that. Is that correct?
Well, there are no guarantees in the political world, but I would say that the preclearance issue at the AG's office ties into the at-large system. And if you have, through the federal consent decree process, eliminated at-large districts and have only wards and super wards, that we would think the system would be defensible at the state level. We're just saying that's another step that you have to go through under the new law.
But the state could come in or the state-- The legislature could still say, no, we want you to have 10 wards.
Well, the legislature could not override a federal consent decree. So I think you'd have some protection there. The question is mechanically, what does the preclearance process at the state level even look like? And I don't think they've thought that far ahead. So we were just trying to identify that there's a step that exists at the state level that didn't exist prior to the 2022 election for you. But I don't think that it is something that is likely to upset what the federal court has blessed if it decides to bless the 731 system through the settlement process.
So even if we make a deal with the plaintiffs, if the court doesn't agree with it, they could still rule otherwise.
Correct. And so that's why we have kind of the escape hatch for July 15. If, for whatever reason, the court's either acted to disapprove the settlement approach or just has not, for whatever reasons the court might have, not acted upon it on July 15, you have the ability to immediately resume your appeal. And actually, the plaintiffs will agree to expedite the appeal. So you've not hurt yourself on the appellate timeline working through the settlement process.
All right, under the 731 plan, who draws the lines?
It would have to be agreed by the plaintiffs and the city. And so we would come back to you, perhaps in closed session. And then with a blessing in closed session, we would then go out to the public with what we hope would be jointly-agreed maps that we would together ask the court to approve. But both the city and the plaintiffs can walk away if we can't agree on maps.
And my last question is to the mayor and the vice mayor who have been our representatives in the negotiation. Will you be clear as to what your recommendation is?
Well, you know, I guess the thing is-- One of the things-- I think personally, we have to avoid a 10-1 system. And then, you know, move forward with the 73 with, you know, the mayor still remaining at large and reduce the negotiated settlement to 1.6 million. So there's actually to, you know, go forward with the intent of the 73, you know, one system with the reduction to 1.6 million.
So when you say the 731, you mean seven districts and--
Three--
Three-- Super wards.
Super wards.
And the mayor.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, please.
So Louis, I would say that I agree with what the mayor says. I completely agree with what Ms. Henley said about how we got here. I think she hit the nail on the head. And I think that this plan is our only way to have any kind of control over our destiny, which is why-- Which is why I do it. I mean, my greatest concern is having the court draw maps that we have no input on. And I think the court's made it abundantly clear that there will be zero public input on their decision, so.
Yeah, we're kind of playing by some other people's rules. All right, anyone else? Okay, how about at this point, we recess until 6 o'clock when we'll be on with former-- There's nothing else, Mr. Duhany, or anything that-- You know, this is the only important discussion that we had on the agenda for this session. We are in recess till 6 o'clock.